About the Clangothlin Green Infrastructure Opportunities Mapping Project that we've been doing as the AOMB team. So this is a process that we're working through really to look at Clangothlin and identify potential theoretical opportunities for green infrastructure around the town. So green infrastructure being a range of both sort of green plant, environmental type adaptations and more classical infrastructure elements that might be needed to help knit things together. So this really is just an opportunities mapping process. So this isn't a, by no means is this a prescriptive project. This comes off the back of a larger piece of work that the AOMB have done called Landscape and Nature Recovery in a Changing Climate. And in that it looks at the whole of the AOMB from a landscape scale perspective and identifies the risks, the adaptations and the mitigations available within those landscapes, knowing that climate change is coming down the road and in some ways is already here. So this is taking a more focused look rather than looking across all of the developed landscapes in the AOMB. This is zooming in just on Clangothlin and looking at what could theoretically fit within the town if there was community enthusiasm for any of this. And this is a proposal that's put together, sort of covering all of the bits and pieces that could fit, that could then be cherry picked from depending on community interest and funding opportunities. So there's six key themes running through the proposal, and that is green spaces, equitable access, biodiversity, nature connectedness, the historic environment and the landscape. And I think we would probably agree that all six of those aspects are incredibly important in a town such as Clangothlin, you know, with such a fantastic setting and rich historic and cultural ties and really making sure that we have accessible opportunities for all members of our community. So the concept is for connecting the existing green spaces around the town together, improving the infrastructure that links them and adding existing assets to improve their quality, creating new green infrastructure assets. And the basic principles, excuse me, these are the basic principles that we're looking to work to. These are all included in the document that I'm putting together in draft form at the moment that I'll of course share with you yourselves once, once that's a little bit further progressed along. But again, I don't think there's anything particularly contentious or outside of the sorts of work that is already being done in and around Clangothlin included there. So as I said before, there's two sort of suites of improvement that are identified within this. There's the ecological improvements, things like wildflower meadows, tree planting, increasing the street trees and street planting, the greenery within the urban environment, and also things like natural flood management strategies such as stream meanders and pools. So that's looking at ways to slow the speed of water running off the built environment and slow how quickly it runs into our streams and rivers to mitigate the peak of flood events further downstream. And also to hold water in the places that we want it and need it around town. So not only are we facing potentially more and more unseasonal flooding events, but we're also likely to face more periods of dry weather and again, unseasonally dry weather. So, you know, it might be about actually holding water in our parks because that then helps us keep our plants and our green spaces looking lush and green. It might be keeping water up on the hillside where it's accessible to farmland cattle. And then there's facilities improvements. So this is things such as improving and maintaining the paths that already exist around town. As I said before, the suds is the sustainable drainage systems. I was just hinting towards things like the permeable surfaces. So when you see the car parks that have all got the little spaces of gravel or mud and grass growing through them, areas that allow water to percolate through and stay within the soil layer rather than landing on tarmac and just running straight off. And also supporting Clangothlin in being bicycle friendly. I will admit that I don't live in Clangothlin, but I do work there and I love it as a town. But the traffic in Clangothlin is really something during, especially during the summer. And more people using bicycles to come into town hopefully means fewer cars, less congestion and better air quality. So what we've done is focused in on a route around Clangothlin. And you can see it highlighted here, the probably minutia detail of it isn't particularly important, I don't think at this stage. But what we did was looked at Clangothlin as a whole and found numerous existing green spaces within Clangothlin and identified a way of linking those places together really so that we could maximize the opportunities to show off green infrastructure opportunities to the community. And then what we've done is had six illustrations made up. And I'm just going to work through these six illustrations now at whatever pace you'd like. And then once we get to the end of them, I'll stop screen sharing and we can have some questions and conversation about it. So these illustrations are all in draft form, as is the main document, and hence why I'm bringing it to you now to get your input. But hopefully you should be able to recognize where most of these illustrations are based. So the name of the street's just disappeared out of my head. Is it Vronbacher up at the allotment? And here we're looking at, you know, whether the community would want to see wildflower verges, edible hedgerows going in in place of the metal fences, putting in some just wooden shelters, just some simple shelter spaces. Covid's really brought to the forefront of our attention how restricted it can be when we can't meet in an enclosed space. And just having a little bit of shelter can give groups and individuals within the community that space to meet and whether that's formal meetings or just social meetings in passing. I'll move on to this is the second illustration. So this has had a little bit of artistic license put into it, sort of twisting the view around a little bit. So we've got the Vivod up on the right hand side there. And that path is essentially looking back in the direction of the allotment. So Dennis Bran would in fact be over your shoulder, but we've pulled it around a little bit, just to try and give the illustration some context and some sense of place. And here it's things like maintaining the historic boundary fence lines that, you know, are falling into disrepair and are at risk of loss. But we feel they add something to the landscape in the AOMB, that sense of history and place. Again, it's whether there's space for edible hedgerows or fruit trees in the community, potentially as a stepping stone to build nature connectedness and help locals engage with nature and wildlife a little bit more. And then bug houses and bat boxes and tree boxes and under canopy planting, looking at putting some of the native species back into our woodlands, possibly taking out some of the non-native species such as laurel or reducing them to support the native species bounce back a little bit more. And then we come down into Riverside Park. And the first thing that really struck me when I visited Riverside Park for the first time, just in a working capacity, I suppose, in my adult life, was I stood in the park in midsummer and was struck by how the traffic rolling down the A5 was just a part of the backdrop of the park. And so along the back edge here, we're suggesting things like putting a hedgerow in to act as a visual and sound barrier. Give, you know, Riverside Park is an absolutely stunning location. And just by detracting away, distracting people away from the presence of the A5 right next to it, we think that could have some huge beneficial impact on people's experience of the park. And then these smaller trees in the foreground here, these are what's known as shade trees. So they're trees that aren't designed to grow particularly huge, but are put in place to offer shade during the summer and trees offer a cooling effect underneath them. So again, a little bit of respite from midsummer heat, but without having to put in built infrastructure. And exploring whether there's an interest for more wildflower meadow in there. We know there's real interest in redeveloping the park, the playground side of things. And I've had good conversations with Jess about that. So we then move on up towards the canal. And this is really just showing off the canal as it is already and wondering how many people make it into Clangothlin but never make it up onto the canal. And it really is a fantastic and unique feature. I spent many years living and working in Birmingham, so I'm well used to being around canals, but canals with heritage horse drawn narrowboats on are something totally different. And this on the left hand side here is an idea that you can put seating into spaces that doesn't necessarily involve people looking on the horizontal plane at each other. And you can actually design seating in a more reclined position that encourages people to stop and look back and look up and engage with the tree canopy or engage with the night sky. So again, offering that as a potential opportunity and sites where that might fit in. And then if we carried on along the canal and crossed over the bridge, we would come up onto the sports field with the Istedvod Pavilion in the background here. And again, you know, nothing major here, but the potential of putting in an avenue of shade trees over that path that gets used by the school kids every morning. And I would imagine gets used by a lot of locals for walking dogs or teaching kids to ride bikes and, you know, beautiful setting. But midsummer, when the heat's really kicking in, it would be a bit of a stark hot baked place, I would imagine. And potentially, again, if there was some desire for it, then an avenue of shade trees could offer a little bit of respite whilst detracting absolutely nothing from the sports facility up there. And then lastly, we come back down into town. And what really, this time I walked up this street, I'm not sure if this is Church Street or if it's moved into a different name. I can never keep track of which bit's which up here, but these are the steps up through into the co-op and this is the one way. And what really stood out to me was there's a couple of houses up there that have got window baskets and plant pots out the front. And just the difference that that made to the feel of that little stretch of street. And again, whether there's an appetite for more, more street planting or green walls. And these, the big planters in the foreground here, these are actually bike locks. So they're big planters, but they've got a reinforced steel bar over the top that allows people to park a bike and lock a bike up against it in a really secure way. It means it's not up against a lamppost at risk of twisting and falling over. It's not being parked and locked in places that get in the way of pedestrians, pushchairs or wheelchair users. And it doesn't look like a bike lock. So it doesn't sit there, it's just some steel metal piece, some lump in the, in the street. So those are the sorts of, sorry, I've just lost the ability to stop sharing my screen. Those are the sorts of pieces that we have pulled together as potential opportunities within Clangothlin. I'm very happy to pull any of those images back up if desired or to field any questions.
That's absolutely brilliant. Thank you very much. Any colleagues got any questions? Mr. Palmer?
Yes, I welcome your imaginative approach. And I think that one of the key things about the landscape here is it isn't recognized that the farmers and the landowners are key to the fantastic landscape that we have. And I mentioned this about my Clangothlin, that they weren't recognized as being an important part of the landscape of Clangothlin. So I'd like that to be recognized. But cycling, as you say, is hairy. If you want to go into town on your bike, and I do it regularly, going along the A5 can be really scary. Whether we, and you can't have a bike lane on the A5. Now, whether we could share the pavements, I don't know. But it needs some really imaginative thinking and it's up to, I've tried, but better brains than mine need to be brought into this one. I'm glad you're engaging with Jess because she's got lots and lots of ideas in the park. For the parks, not just that, because you've not touched on Penguin, there's a lot of stuff is going on there. And you've not touched on the main car park. And that's a really ugly car park. And Denbysia could put shade trees on there. It would achieve a lot of the stuff that you want to do in terms of drainage of tarmac. And it would enhance the main car park, which is the entry point for a lot of our visitors. So I'd like you to consider that. And I think also leaf management could be an issue if you're going to put all these trees up.
Brilliant. Stuart, you had your hand up.
Right, thank you Chair. Just, yeah, a very laudable young man, if I may just say so. Just a few caveats. It's all very well coming in with wonderful ideas and they are wonderful ideas. However, you need to really get into what the local people want. For example, the first shot is at the bottom of the hill from where I live, the allotments. Some people approached me about a month or so ago, concerned they'd heard stories, the allotments were going to be sold. So I suspected something to do with this. I know, I know they're not, but what I'm saying to you is there's a waiting list for those allotments. And if you start putting sheds on there and taking up space, I think you'll get a lot of resistance. That's number one. Riverside Park, I was the one who got 500,000 quid back in 2004 and had it redone. And I offered to work with Jess, but unfortunately the council wouldn't let me. But what I will point out to you, there was a hedge there and it was taken out because of the cost of maintenance. So you've got that one to beat up. And just be careful with the field by the school. It's nothing to do with the field at the school, it's nothing to do with the sports facility there. It is for the people of Clangothlin. So when you're approaching people of Clangothlin, bear that in mind, it is owned by, on behalf of the people of Clangothlin. So you've got to get the people of Clangothlin, not the school, not the county on board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to ask any questions? Did you have your hand up, Robyn?
Thanks. Really great presentation and some really inspiring ideas and obviously a lot of work and thinking and consultation still to come. It was just a request really, as you're looking at some of the work, just to really think through how we can be building the Welsh language in. A project that I've been involved in has been, for example, capturing the traditional names of fields as they've been doing other projects and getting them on record. So it'd be great to see that being built into the project throughout the ideas that you've explored. Thank you.
Anybody else? So absolutely awe inspiring in terms of its creativity and its aims. A couple of things, I think reiterating something that councillor Palmer and councillor Davies touched on is the importance of building into it as well as the doing the capital stuff. This is what we've done, is ongoing maintenance. In terms of the maintenance of hedges and trees and stuff, I've seen in the past stuff done and then after a couple of years, it looks, it's kind of lost its impact because it just looks unkempt and uncared for. Yeah. So important to that. One of the, one of the, one of the questions I had is a couple of questions. What form is community consultation going to take? And also a sort of time scale in terms of when you'd see the consultation process and if you got managed to get some funding for it, kind of what would be the progression? Is it a plan over two years or three years or four years or?
Sorry, I was just scribbling notes as you were finishing off there. Okay, so I'll touch on a few of those points, probably in reverse order. This document's really about the stage before looking at funding opportunities and actual installation and development. And this links actually right back to the first point made about farmers and landowners. So we are working on another project up in the Penguin Vale, North East Wales area statement project with Natural Resource Wales. And that project sort of sits as the next tier down from this project because that is really strategically engaging with the community in an even smaller area and looking at exactly what they want, where they want it and how we're going to fund it. So this is sort of zoomed back out a layer and this is about starting these conversations. And there's various funding opportunities open at the moment. You know, there's money from the wind farms, there's Cadwinger in communities money, the sustainable development money, depending on what project it is and what enthusiasm there is for it. There's also potentially Welsh government money. And the progression of this is really, you know, it's down to how the conversation evolves with the community. And this is by no means an attempt for the AOMB to parachute in, come up with some ideas and then start doing stuff. This is much more about bringing a set of ideas to the community that may already be well understood, or they may not be, and having the conversation, seeing what eagerness and enthusiasm there is for it, and then identifying opportunities forward from there. So in terms of what forms community consultation going to take, really brutally honestly, I am still learning the lay of the land with the community in Clangothlin. As I said, I'm not a local, but my experience working in the Penguin Vale over the last few months has sort of given me the taste for and the learning for how to engage with the community. And my aspiration was for this meeting to be the first step of that community consultation because of timings of when I got in touch with Gareth to ask for this meeting and I'd missed one of your meetings. And so we've ended up with a bit of a time lag. I have already done a little bit of community consultation with some of the individuals at the Friends of the Earth meetings and some of the interested parties in the Penguin Vale project. And also those who have engaged with the Landscape Nature Recovery project we've been working on who are also in the Clangothlin area. So that process has started. In terms of what form it's going to take, it'll take whatever form it needs to, to have the conversation with the community. And I'm really keen to do things face to face because I think that you get a lot more out of a face to face meeting. Off the back of a similar meeting to this on the Penguin Vale, I went down into the Vale and spent a day there, meeting locals, meeting landowners. And my aspiration is that exactly the same would happen with this project. In terms of ongoing maintenance, that is of course a consideration. But as with a couple of the other suggestions, such as the main car park, leaf management and the hedge maintenance, this is one of those projects that's a little bit chicken or egg. I could go to street scene and to highways and to the council departments and I could say to them, how will we manage the maintenance of this, this and this? And then I come to the community and the community go, we're not interested in any of that. And then I go back to highways and go, no, sorry, community aren't interested. And then next time I go to highways, then they're that much more dismissive because they're like, well, no, we spent a load of time on the last project and it went to nothing. So they're all completely valid questions and thoughts. None of them have been explored at this point because at the moment I've not got a strength of emphasis from the community that there's a desire for them. But the main car park is a brilliant idea. And I'll be honest, I don't know how we managed to wander around Clangothlin and go past that, probably because we were on foot and not in a car.
Robyn?
Thanks. Just to add on the car park question, that has been something that's been looking at. I can say that Denbysia are already aware of and considering. It came up when the, when the prospect of trees along Castle Street was being considered as part of Clangothlin 2020. And we were keen, the initial Arcadis suggestions, I think had about eight trees on that, on the Castle Street section. But when then the utilities and the wires and everything were looked at underground, it wasn't possible to get the initially envisaged number of trees along Castle Street, though I do think there's potential for more green infrastructure than is currently there. So we managed to get one extra tree, which I'm obviously really pleased with. And, but there was a commitment then from Denbysia that when they looked at the main car park, that they would consider the bays, well, suds as a starting point and then tree planting. That the point you made about the rec fields and the exposure and the hot sun will be very much the case for the car parks. So it'd be really great to see that. Those discussions are ongoing, so I can provide an update over the upcoming months and link in any ideas that you've got as well.
Councillor Palmer?
Point of order Chair, before we go into the point of order.
Sorry again.
Point of order, there's two members of the public contacting me who've been trying to get into the meeting and they can't get in. I don't know whether you can check that out, Mr. Clark?
I mean, we have got two members coming on the link, the link is out there.
If you can work on that Gareth, then we'll carry on with the discussion. Councillor Palmer?
Yes. On the council number.
It was just a point of, that you should be aware of, that planters are a moot point for future reflection.
Can I, just to finish really? So it sounds really, really exciting and for me, the key concept that kind of underlines it, that we ought to be shouting from the rooftops, particularly given where we live, is the idea of natural infrastructure rather than built infrastructure. Yeah. Because the first port of call for anything is to build, isn't it? So the notion of doing it with nature rather than with cement, yeah, is an awesome concept as far as I'm concerned. So thank you very much, Tom. It's brilliant. Thank you. Okay, guys. Statements from councillor councillors.
Well, running to both here, I mean, councillor Tim, that's who's at that meeting, that he has to formally apologize. Councillor Mile has apologized this evening. So if we scroll into that, there's also councillor Brindley's apologized, he's just been to the dentist, hoping to get back. And our youth rep Shay has apologized as well.
Okay, thank you. So taking care of apologies. Declarations of interest. I've not got no pecuniary interest in it, but there is on our planning, a planning application for the demolition of some garages on Penguin and the building of stuff, I think. I am right on, I did catch that. I'm Chair of Penguin Community Association currently, so yeah, I have an interest, but it's, I'm not going to gain anything from it. Any other declarations of interest? No. Minutes to authorize the chair to sign the minutes of the previous meeting of the town council. Councillor Haddie? Yeah, I'd like to propose that, seconded by councillor Lube. Anybody against? Thank you. Committee minutes to approve the minutes of the Chitterslow Committee held on the 23rd of November 2021. Councillor Lovelock?
Can I just come in there Chair please? Can I just come in there Chair please?
Yeah.
Can I just come in? Thank you. And I've just, I did check to see how many people are coming or attending these meetings. And I think there were two at the last. I'd just like to put forward the point I made at the council. We're spending £3,000 a year on this committee and we're getting two members of the public attending. I'm not very happy about that. Just, I'd like to put that on the record.
Okay. Councillor Lovelock has proposed that minutes. Anybody like to second that? Thank you, councillor Lube. Any objections?
Yeah, I voted against. Thank you.
Pardon?
I voted against.
You vote against the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Financial reports, authorized payments.
Yes, Chairman, I'll just share the screen. Just for Tom, actually, you don't have to stay, Tom. I guess you've got a great interest, but you're quite happy, can stay if you want to.
I didn't want to just rudely disappear, but I will, I will drop out. Gareth's got my email. If anyone would like to get in touch, I'd welcome those conversations. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I need to open what I'm trying to show you, but that's about it.
Can I can I just query the last objection? Is it possible to understand from councillor Davies, the the basis of the objection to understand his concerns?
Councillor Davies.
Yeah, I've already made made my comments. Thank you.
Can you, sorry, not everybody, your, the sound, the sound isn't very good, Stuart. Can you repeat what your objection was, please?
I've already made my feelings known. Thank you.
Well, okay, thank you. Gareth.
Yes, Chair, and I want to share this because there's one issue, not issue, but I suspect in the sake as well. Scribe accounts, the subscription has come in again. Last year, we we funded this out of underspend. And again, I'm suggesting that we could, if members are happy, we will find this from underspend in other in other areas because it's cheaper than paying monthly. So if we get this paid for quickly, we make we make savings on an annual subscription. So I just wanted to point that out. That's the reason it's in, rather than pay it monthly, which is about 10, 20% more. So that's that's about, that's all, Chairman. I just wanted to highlight that one, one, one payment there, Chairman. Otherwise, if members are happy, then you could approve that.
Councillor Lovelock, you got your hand up? No? Okay, thank you. Anybody got any questions? Councillor Palmer. John?
Is that, yes, I'm just, I'm just unmuting. Is that the scribe account, Gareth?
Yeah, that's the new financial management software.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Anybody like to propose we accept those? Someone put their hand up, please. Councillor Lube, seconded by councillor Lovelock. Thank you very much.
Bank reconciliation, there's two elements here. I think this, the report itself explains, it has better to the clarification, which we're happy to give. Councillor, a former councillor, Richards, used to be the secretary. And in the good old days, used to pop in, look at the bank statements and look at the reconciliation and value of that. We, couple of elements, we're online for lots of things, but we still get paper copies of all the accounts we operate. You know, mayor's account, as charity account, the current account, the business money manager account, three or four sheets in each one. You know, little booklets and all the notification of FSA four times every year. It seems to be a complete waste of of paper coming into the office, postage from the HSBC and the fact that, you know, we've declared a claim to emergency. It'd be nice to think that we can significantly reduce the amount of paper and and not only that. I hate to say it, the postman's vehicle time and journeys to bring all these things to the office. So we have, each time I go online now, there's a prompt, do you want to go paperless? So I think it would be nice, really, I checked with the auditor, as long as we can keep a copy, which we can. We can keep a PDF version, which is how I've had to send everything over the last two years to audit anyway. So the first first recommendation or suggestion to recommend is that we move to paperless with HSBC. And it won't be for that long because, as you know, we've been asked the task and there are climate action, emergency action plans to look at a greener, a more ethical bank. So that'll be coming up with a new proposal becoming into the new council's consideration. Because we can then get all the signatures done at the same time, rather than doing something a couple of months later and change everything again. And again, that would be an online facility. So the first is that. And then to match that, to comply with the regulations that the auditor said, a mechanism to do that reconciliation. So the idea would be being, would be that this is a document here, which I want to share.
All right, so we we need to nominate a member to verify bank conciliations.
Yeah, so they would.
Councillor Haddie.
Before we get to that point, would it be prudent for us to have a regular running ex officio appointment, such as a deputy chairman or something? So that the next time somebody departs, then we don't have a problem having to replace them and fully breach of our financial. As long as they're not signatories to the account.
No, I mean, we don't need, we don't have to do monthly. It's easier to do monthly. We we only have to quarterly, so we will catch up as it were. So this document, what it suggests, you know, at the top, it's got potential signature. We could get that electronic, but well, the idea is go go paperless. So that would be sent, which is this month. So you see the bank balances at the bottom. This would be then sent along with a PDF copy of the bank statements. So you can see the, you know, the end of month that we're considering. And then what suggestion is whoever's appointed would then send an email in first thing to myself so I can present it to the council. We can then present it and that member can confirm that it's been accepted again. So we get a resolution as well from that member. It, for me, it could be, the only proviso, as councillor Haddie said, is it mustn't be another check and signature.
Picking up on councillor Haddie's comment, might it be prudent, particularly as this council is is heading towards its end and there'll be a new council shortly, to recommend that it's perhaps the deputy mayor? And then that would carry forward, yeah?
Yeah, that's the problem, I said, because it'll all be online. There's no need for anybody to come to the office. And then and then we make it, perhaps we could fill that into nominations, you know, next the next annual meeting that we need, just the deputy mayor.
Okay, yeah.
Standing, standing.
So that that was councillor Haddie, sorry, councillor Palmer, you've got a question?
Yeah, Gareth, you were talking about going paperless. And I have a an online access to my accounts. I have a little machine that I access it. Would that be the same with this account, that if we go paperless on this? Where would the, and if it is, where would the little access machine be be stored? So that, and would the signatories be able to access it through this?
No, I mean, it's actually here.
Yeah.
And also you can do a code on on the app.
Yeah.
I don't want to prejudge things, but it's looking more and more likely that the only ethical bank who are taking customers that would fit up the purpose is one used by a lot of a lot of other councils, which is the Unity Bank, which is based in Birman. Ethical, works with social enterprises, as I say, a lot of councils run with it. The beauty of the the Unity Bank as well is it has like a triple lock facility. I could have, I can put all the councillors' names, because I'll come on to why I'm saying this, all the councillors' names in. At the moment, I'm the only one that can operate this. Can't have us double up because obviously called for. So the authorization, the authorization you've just done now, historically, you have two names on it and myself. That gives the authority to make the payment. But you don't know if I'm clever enough to make a payment and do it right. So you're taking, you know, my word, that it's been done. Obviously, you know, it is because the reconciliation shows it's been done on the cash book. But this system with Unity, when I put a payment up, it would automatically email all councillors. And then when two others verify that payment, it gets paid. There's an added level of security. So you could say, right, this is what was approved on the authorized list. We've now had an email. Once two councillors look at it and say, yeah, that complies, click, that payment gets made. So there's that extra layer under that. So I mean, this is just purely not having statements coming through the post. And I would copy them as PDFs and keep them annually in a, you know, on a file on a computer. But that's, as I'm saying, there are other things we need to do to tighten things up and then, you know, that move to that bank could do that. And then this is just purely cutting down on paper.
I think you're somewhat getting ahead of ourselves here because we're not discussing.
Discussing that, but I just wanted to clarify.
What we're doing is talking about complying with our financial regulations.
Yeah, so we've got, we've got, first of all, we've got a recommendation that at this point in time. The the deputy mayor would verify bank reconciliations.
Yep, that's fine.
And then, and that would move into the new council and be incorporated.
So that was councillor Haddie's proposal. Anybody like to second it, please? Councillor Lube, thank you very much. And then we have a a a second part to the recommendation, which is to move to paperless online banking. Anybody like to propose that, please? Councillor Haddie, anybody like to second it? Councillor Palmer, thank you very much.
And then, sorry, Chair, the third one is to agree that process on how the information is.
All right, to to verify the process as defined in paragraph 3.3. Yeah, anybody like to propose we accept that? Councillor Lube, somebody second it, please? Come on, someone put a hand up. Councillor Haddie, thank you. Anybody got any objections to any of those? Okay, thank you. We know. So financial statements, town clerks report. No, sorry, financial statements, sorry, Gareth.
Again, I'll just search, I'll just, sorry. I presented a slightly different one this this month, Chairman. As we're getting closer to the financial year, end of the financial year, rather. Chair, I'll share just to explain. So as you can see, this is one issue I might need to speak to Craig, so I do further down, but generally things are already to plan, as it were, shall we say, or to budget. We've not nosedived in terms of of expenditure, we have improved. Largely because, as I said, I've been warning about, as you see, the income position. The income is significantly lower, probably because very little in the town hall. And it's better because, as if you recall, for some of the tenants, we've been recovering rent from last year, which is coming to this financial year. So if we hadn't have done that, the position would be a lot worse. Asset management, obviously, that twenty six thousand eight hundred is solely allocated for the roof. As are other bits, as we identified elsewhere. And there will also be a call on reserve. So would, as I say, I don't see any major issues. There are issues, say, staff costs, obviously there. Things like training hasn't happened, training's gone virtual, so there's been no subsistence to pay for anything there on training. It was factored in for the pay rise, which hasn't been approved, national pay rise. Which I understand might be 1.15%, not the 10% the unions have, surprisingly. So the position, there's a couple of months to go, is 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 okay. And we're not going to get into any significant problems. There will be, as I say, some movement around to pay for the scaffolding, et cetera, and the roofworks. So that's the position, Chairman. So I just hope we do it to show where we are. The the query I have is this twelve thousand, I've gone through and through the accounts and I can't see why. There's a budget of payments of twelve thousand on income because we wouldn't be doing that. So I'm something, there's a new system for me. So that's I'm going to have to check with the the team in Scribe. So it is irrelevant to balance, like anyway. That's the position, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Anybody got any questions? Councillor Palmer?
Have you noticed a significant increase in the cost of energy, in energy costs?
Well, fortunately, just before I see, we got tied into a twenty four month contract, if you remember, with good energy. So we want, obviously, we've got another two years at that fixed price and there's something drastically goes. And to be honest, I think the gas is a lot, is less, we've got a new more efficient boiler. So I'm hoping that we can make some savings on that as we go ahead. It's early days before, we're lucky because we got in in July and then, you know, on a twenty four month contract, so. But obviously in two years' time, who knows what it will be. We may have a sit this way.
Thank you.
Well, just just because it it doesn't appear anywhere else and the closest we get is within a financial statement. Is the roof and the and the scaffolding stuff still on? To be down by the end of February?
It was to come down the end of this week, but of course the weather now. They're dropping it down, it's about to, the last bit to do now is the cast iron troughing, like all that other weather's calling. Roof gutters. And of course, the weather has prevented.
Yeah.
So should it be down by the end of the week? Of course, we've got two storms on the way, so I don't know.
It'll be when we get, so it'll be down when we get a few unwindy day, unrainy days, yeah?
It's rain, it's rain at the moment. To get people up there, they can't paint the thing in the rain, it'll just, you know.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Anyone like to propose we accept the financial report, financial statement? Councillor Haddie, anybody like to second that? Councillor Lovelock, thank you. Town clerks reports.
And we got a couple of consultations. The first one is the Local Government Election Wales Act statutory guidance. Having read through it and attached it to the to the report. It just goes through a lot of the stuff we've already been presented with. This practitioners conference, I'm on for the next few days. We've got two sessions on this as well, on the guidance. I can't see anything in the document that is awkward or would cause any problems. And I think, you know, it's as a as a form of guidance, it's adequate. I'm sure things will change if we press with new legislation, as you always do. So the recommendation is that we just, we just support the guidance and inform the Welsh Government accordingly. That we have no objections and see it as a quite an appropriate booking.
Anybody got any questions, any comments? So the proposal is that we support, yeah, the contents of the DROs statutory guidance. Anybody like to propose that? Councillor Palmer, seconded by councillor Haddie. Thank you. Anybody got any objections? No, thanks very much.
The second item is the consultation we considered last, that was a very good debate on last meeting. And what I've done, I had comments, thanks, that's very much from councillor Palmer and councillor Lovelock. And I've hopefully disseminated or simulated it into the document. I've added one or two areas which weren't in there, one about the the days, twenty hundred, twenty days. And then, as I said, there was that patch all at the end, which was, do you have any other comments? So a lot of the information from councillor Lovelock I put in there. It's just whether those members are happy that it reflects in general what's been said. I've added affordability elsewhere as well under sections. And if you are, that we then present this as our formal comments on this.
Yeah, this this was, there was a fairly substantial debate about this since our last meeting, wasn't there? Councillor Haddie, you had your hand up?
Yes, I thought the comments on section fifteen there were a little bit on the speculative side. I would say that rather than vague, since it may offer is always a bit of a tricky one. And it's not at all clear how limiting second hands or short term penalty let's would improve the availability of affordable housing to Welsh speakers. And if it did, it would be inappropriate since we've got two official languages, so to restrict anything to one language would be inappropriate. So I I I take the sentiment, but I think the net effect is a bit wishy washy. My my, I'm not going to object to it.
Yeah, my my interpretation on that, John, was that kind of almost. kind of almost that limiting the number of properties who use a second home, short-term holiday lets had the potential for making more housing available for everybody, yeah? And in the context of everybody, it would also, yeah, be making more housing available for indigenous Welsh speakers.
Can I say, Chairman, I raised this with, I call him my son-in-law, he's not. He's a senior policy officer now in the Welsh Government. And I said, it's very hard to understand how planning breaks can affect the Welsh languages. They are standard in most consultations, I accepted that. So I had to say, well, could you take the message back that, you know, they may be standard, but they would be best if they were adapted to the guidance or the consultation that's in hand. So he's going to take that on board. He accepted, it's very difficult, but it is something that has to go in on all consultations, but.
Anybody else?
You're right.
Yes, please, Chair.
Yes, councillor, yeah, councillor Davies?
Yes, thank you, Chair, I'm agreeing with councillor Haddie in some respects. I know when I was in post, there was talk about Welsh stuff and all the rest of it, but he's quite right. We are a dual language country, so we couldn't go down that route. Just interesting, and again, councillor Haddie made the point, some rather sweeping statements. I'll toughen it up a little bit in the report of councillor Palmer and councillor Lovelock. And just ask a simple question, do they know how many how many second homes there are in Clangothlin? Discounting caravans and shalies?
Councillor Keddie, are you still there? No, he's gone. Councillor Keddie, at our last meeting, I can't, you remember the figure that he came up with? But it was.
No, councillor Keddie didn't do the report, councillor Lovelock and councillor Palmer did it. So I'm asking them directly, how many second homes are there in Clangothlin discounting caravans and shalies? Thank you. They don't know, do they know, do they know? Because it's in the report.
Yeah, what I was trying to say, what I was trying to say, councillor Davies, was at the meeting where we discussed, when we discussed this at our last meeting. I think unfortunately you weren't there, were you? But councillor, councillor Keddie did have the figures that you're asking.
The point I'm making, Chair, is councillor Keddie is not making that report, he's not mentioning the report. Councillor Lovelock and councillor Palmer made the statements in their report, so I'm asking them directly. So it's nothing to do with councillor Keddie, it's councillor Lovelock and councillor Palmer. Do they know how many second homes are there in Clangothlin? A simple question, yes or no? If they do know, can they tell me?
Thank you, thank you, councillors. My responses to the additions that the clerk has added in this report were very much in response to the wider discussion that was quite extensive in the last meeting, where councillor Keddie did provide some details. And I do, this is an area, obviously, that does come up from time to time in the town. I think while I don't have the numbers that councillor Keddie had that we referred to in that last discussion, if you do a quick search on Airbnb, which, you know, middle, early, well, mid, middle of February, so a winter period, for two people, there's 155 places to stay in Clangothlin within, let's say, a five, four-mile radius. So, you know, that's quite a substantial number just for two people, let alone if you increase that to include, you know, accommodation for larger numbers. And so, you know, it does, the point that I made in the last meeting and that the town clerk has added to the initial reports that we all were broadly in favour of was around the knock-on impact.
Thank you.
Just to complete what I was saying, thank you, councillor Davies.
Councillor Davies, can you let councillor Lovelock finish, that would be good, thank you.
You asked me to respond on my, on the point. And I hadn't finished, actually, I was continuing to answer the question. The point that I had made in the previous discussion and that the clerk asked me to follow up with some additional detail was the knock-on effect of on affordable homes, of construction of affordable homes for local people, Welsh-speaking or otherwise. That if there isn't a consideration of secondary homes, then the demand for affordable homes continues and we continue constructing buildings and that will inevitably have an impact on on emissions and biodiversity, which continues to increase.
Okay, thank you, councillor Palmer.
I concur with councillor Lovelock.
Chair, may I come back on that, please?
Yeah, briefly, Stuart, please, thank you.
You can roll your eyes all you like, Chair, but the point, I've made a point.
I've not rolled my eyes.
The point is, you did, I'm sorry, if you look back on this film, you see yourself rolling your eyes. Anyway, the point I was asking, a very simple question, do they know? And it's quite obvious that they don't, so they've made a report to this council and they don't know the numbers. Thank you, that's all I wanted to do, to clarify, thank you.
That's incorrect.
All right, okay. Councillor, councillor Palmer?
That's, that's, that's an unnecessary statement and it really doesn't.
I'd like to ask councillor Palmer, councillor Davies to withdraw that comment. I think it was rude and unnecessary and I, as I've made very clear, I was responding specifically to some data that was shared in the last meeting. I added some additional, I was asked to add some additional information, which I have done. And that is the situation. I think that was a very unnecessary comment, I'd like an apology, please.
Okay, thank you. I can't, I want to kind of bring this to a close because we're no longer debating the issue that's on the agenda. We don't want to kind of move to bickering amongst ourselves. So the proposal is that we hold on, I've lost it now.
Forward the revised comments.
Yeah, ref, to recommend the revised observations, once considered by members, should be forwarded to Welsh Government as a town council's consultation response. Anybody like to propose that, please? Thank you, councillor Haddie, seconded by councillor Palmer. Anybody got the objections? No, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda. Tidy Town Team.
Yes, that tiny, and they provide just the report. Again, you can see from the statistics, they provide a very valuable service, not only within the town, but around the town. And in a very difficult year, they still managed to get out and do quite a bit of work. And again, if you quantify the value of that with on cost, if you're the member of staff of a but bearing in mind, we're going to be charged £13,000 just to clean the front of the town hall by the county at one time. You know, it's, 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 it's a lot of work they're doing, not just sweeping outside the town hall. It's considerable value for money. And I think it's something, again, that we should record, our thanks for them. Secondary to that, as you know, they've got a subsidiary contract with us to just tidy the centenary square up a few times in the year. The new tenders have gone out for the that's in with the last, with the presentation, really, about our floral displays and general ground maintenance. I have included that a monthly check on the square should happen then. But I still think there's the value in having a team to go in and do that sort of all-in-depth tidy up before the major events and we start a lot of them at heaven. And I think the job they do is exceptional. And therefore, the recommendation is that we recognize the role of the Tidy Towns team yet again and the sterling work they do. We affirm the agreement we got them, which is listed for those three cleaning sessions. And in view of the fact that's been going out for a good few years now, it just increased with the inflationary amount to £325 from £300 next year to support their efforts, Chairman.
Any comments, councillor Haddie?
I'd be pleased to support that proposition. There was something that the clerk just made a statement on, tenders have gone out. Are these tenders for the plantings?
They're the tenders, yeah, they're the tenders, we should come back to asset management when they're in.
I was about to say, we haven't seen anything yet. And my next question, have they been published?
They were posted on Facebook and they've gone to the list of people that we, sort of regular suspects, as it were. And local companies locally were contacted direct. About six or seven have gone out now. Two have expressed an interest, so hopefully we will get. I definitely think we will get something back from the existing contractor. One or two other companies, we normally would have gone out of business. Like Ploniggy and Colway aren't pleading with anyone. Anyway, I'd say that that will come to asset management for consideration.
Is there, is there a point of discussion, there's asset management this week, isn't there, is it going to be discussed?
It's not on the agenda, though.
It'll be the end of March, we need another one the end of March. This is an interim one because of having to.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lovelock?
Thank you, I also, you know, I think the work they do is absolutely amazing and the diligence and thoroughness. So absolutely to be commended and I support the proposal wholeheartedly. I think the only suggestion I might make would be a slight addition to the, I can't remember what it's called, the scope of work or the terms of reference would be perhaps to see if there's a reflection of the climate and ecological emergency within the terms. I know we only have a small area that this team look after. But the, you know, because we have a small area, maybe that's, there are opportunities for them to build in some additional aspects into their work. Just the one, one example, I guess, to illustrate that. You know, they did excellent work tidying up the centenary square but under the tree, which was getting very trampled and untidy and covered the area with much neater looking rocks. Just whether there could have been an opportunity there to do a bit of planting, of indigenous plants, something like that. So just a small point, but possibly one that could be nicely incorporated into their scope.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Good point about perhaps not chopping down pampas trees when the butterflies run and things like that. And just on the stones, it was, it is very much an emergency to make it look more preventable during lockdown. There is membrane in the least, there is a third, but there are other proposals I'd like to take for the asset management on that in the future as well. It's just a slow cost, quick, it's becoming rather unsightly for lots of reasons, as you probably know.
That's reassuring to hear, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, so can I, can I?
Chair, have I had my hand up?
Sorry, councillor Davies.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Just, just again, reiterating what others have said, sterling work very much appreciated. But whilst we made the lovely comments about them, the report itself doesn't make very nice reading. They are quite scathing, you know, the report is quite scathing about Derbyshire County Council and some of its offices. I was going to ask councillor Timms, if he'd have come to the meeting tonight, why he allowed this to happen. And also, I would like as a council to write to the county and say, what on earth is going on there, are these people giving, was it £10,000 to £15,000 that Gareth has worked out that would have cost to have it done? And something, what was the word used?
£10,000 to £15,000 for what, Stuart, I missed that?
The work, if you look at the report, Gareth, I think it said the work they do is equivalent to £10,000 to £15,000 worth of work that they're giving for free. So I'm quite concerned that Derbyshire County Council, the street scene, has done what they've done. And I think we as a council should be writing to DCC and say, hang on a bit, these people are doing sterling work. We want you to re-put into place again, that insurance, is it? £100 worth or something like that, stuff like that, anyway.
I think, I think, I think my suggestion might be, Stuart, that what we, what we do is perhaps forward their report to Derbyshire for Derbyshire to communicate with them, yeah?
Well, I'd like to step it up a little bit to say that this council is disappointed with the action of the DCC in taking away their funding, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We, councillor Haddie?
I don't think the comments made by councillor Davies are quite correct. It's my understanding that the insurance cover was withdrawn because they failed on several occasions to meet the requirements contained within the insurance cover. So it's not quite as straightforward as it might appear, as reported in various other Facebook.
I can only go by the report, as in front of us, councillor.
So I think it's a matter for them to deal with directly rather than us as a council.
Are you putting that forward as a proposal, councillor Davies?
I'll put it forward as a formal proposal that we write to Derbyshire County Council, expressing our concerns that funding has been withdrawn and for them to reinstate it, thank you.
Anybody like to second that? Councillor Lovelock? All those in favour?
Yes.
One, two. Councillor Davies, one, two?
Yes.
So that's, three people have voted for, those against?
Four.
One, so councillor Davies, councillor Davies's proposal is carried. So if you can, Gareth, write to Derbyshire County Council query in the withdrawal of, yeah, their funding, please. Right, so we have a series of three proposals and recommendations. Can I add a fourth one? I suppose it might need to go to an independent vote. That Gareth writes on behalf of the council to the Tidy Town Team, thanking them for their efforts during the course of the last 12 months.
Yes.
Yeah, Chair, I think that was implicit in the first recommendation.
So the recommendations, they're in front of you. Anybody like to propose that we accept them?
Yes.
Thank you, councillor Palmer, councillor Davies, seconding that. All those, or is there anybody against? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
So Davies Day window competition?
Yes, Chairman, we did do this. I can't remember who was the mayor, was it, was it Sheena? A few years back. We were approached then to do St Davies Day competition, which went down quite well. Mentally, I see Derbyshire's come back again this year. And in the reports, as you can see, they do a lot of work to support the use of Welsh language in retail sector, hospitality throughout, across the county. And they do get funding, obviously, from the county and Welsh Government to achieve that. But when it comes down to sort of site-specific or town-specific initiatives, they are looking for further funding. And as you can see in the report, they're looking, in essence, for £300. Sorry, £160 to £300, actually, five last time, towards the cost as listed. So it's to put some cash prizes in, certificates, a little bit of marketing and some printing, obviously, of the certificates and everything. As I said, we have done it in the past, it was well received. The mayor would judge it the week before and his consultant would go around. There'd be no administration on our side, it would be solely run by mentally, I see, at Derby. We possibly have £160 somewhere, we could identify it from the community grant scheme, which hasn't been taken up. And we've resolved not to push it again because of the issues with expenditure. Also, income on the town hall, so it wouldn't make a big dent in that. So if members did want to support this initiative, then I would suggest we would take it from that budget, Chairman, but I'd prefer the members' decision to support it.
Right, so the recommendation is that the town council considers support the St David's Day window competition. Unless anybody's got any questions, thank you, councillor Davies, anyone like to second that? Councillor Loeb, anybody oppose it? Thank you. Planted applications, we've lost councillor Keddie, so, yeah. And he's not sent us any notes this month, has he?
Yes, he did.
He has?
Yeah.
I never received them, so, yeah.
Which is probably why you've, again, apologies, it's here, 102 on my on my word version of my report, but it doesn't appear on PDFs, so I apologize. So Penguin isn't one to be considered. I'll have to get hold of John in ACS to find out, there must be something wrong somewhere. So I apologize for that. I mean, shall I read out his comments, shall I have to call them out?
Yes, please, starting with zero, zero one nine.
Share the email, shall I, or? See if I can bust you all out, I don't know where you've gone. I'll see my. Right, here we go. So there's, these are notes, as you can see. Put down in villas, cardo no objection, highway no objection, do accompany standing letter but no objection, AM and B no objection. This house is on the south corner of Hill Street, Aberada. As this is in line with everything agreed on in the planning correspondence of our last meeting, I propose we do not object.
Anybody got any, anything to comment? You need to shout out, because I can't see everybody's face anymore. Right, the proposal is that we accept the application.
Shall we run, shall we run to the vault, chairman, and then at the end we can check out, so you can see them. On some B works at Chester Tree, trees are recently lost, large limits now doing interest to use, of course to do to make it safe, so I think that's, and secondly, the sycamore is dead, and those are future safety risks. Ignore Penguin, as I said, that's come through as a.
Now, Gareth, Gareth, I've, I've looked at it, I think I've perhaps got a little over excited, I believe that the planning application has gone in, but it's not this one, so.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. Okay, I think I know who you're talking about. And then the reconsultation landed part of Ron Havred, the creature of West, again, cardo no objection, the neighbour has objected, but essentially councillor Caddy's saying it's a proposal that is very similar but different, they have to roof arrangement, and he doesn't see any reason to reverse that decision. So in essence, chairman, unless other, other members have comments on them, there'd be no objection to all those applications.
There's a, there's another one on the next erection of a, 0801.
Is that over the page?
Yeah.
Trying to go far enough. No, of 0801, yeah, that's the reconsultation.
That was the reconsultation.
Yeah, that's gone a brick.
Sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Anybody got any, any, any comments on any of those? The recommendation for all of them is that we accept them. Anybody like to propose that? councillor Haddie, seconded. councillor Loeb, any objections? No, thank you very much. Certificates of decision?
Just to be noted, chairman, just for the.
Yeah. Any correspondence?
We've considered those items really in the main agenda under the consultations, sorry, the report.
Correspondence?
No correspondence, everything I've had, I've forwarded on, was significant for members.
Reports to the town council?
Says outside bodies he represents.
Harvey, have you got anything you'd like to say?
No, I had to, I had to send my apologies to the Jubilee meeting and with, with school council, we had a meeting with Graham Timms and the rest of Denbysia County Council about banning single-use plastics in school. And there was a report coming from the canteen company, it was, they had a trial in Osgolglan Cloyde, apparently it wasn't very successful, but we're still waiting to have a response on that.
Okay, thank you. Just to reiterate, because not everybody was here, we did have a meeting on Friday organised by Sheena to discuss what we might do for the, the Queen's 70th Jubilee. We've got some skeletal plans, I had a, I had something off flam blogger today asking for details, and I'm going to respond and say it's very skeletal at the minute, and as soon as we have details, we'll let him know. We've got some ideas, we're doing a little bit of research and are going to meet again in a week or so's time, just to kind of feed back to each other and decide on a, a final plan of action and what we're going to do, so. That's kind of where we are with that at the minute. Is anybody else? councillor Palmer?
It's about the footpath working group, whatever it's called. We, we had a further meeting, a lot of what's, there's been problems, obviously, with trees coming down on footpaths, but that's with our remit. And we, we are relying on the AOMB and Denbysia to, the recommendations that we made, that they will fulfil their responsibilities.
Okay, thank you.